Today is December 4th, 6:30 PM. Thank you for joining us. Clerk, if you could call role, that would be great.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
And Chair Wolpert?
I am here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Fantastic. If you wouldn't mind, everybody stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Agenda item number three, any reports or late communications from Planning Commission?
There are none.
Fantastic. Item Agenda four, ex parte communications. This item is meant for commissioners and is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings or regular business. Are there any disclosures tonight?
I drove by the property.
Yes, and I also drove by the property.
I did drove by the property this afternoon.
I did as well. Fantastic. We'll move on to item number five. Any special presentations tonight? Fantastic. Item number six, oral communications. Oral communications. Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, please read the procedure into the record.
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at the time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
And do we have any speaker cards tonight?
We do not.
All right. I will go ahead and close oral communication. Let's move on to item number seven, approval of minutes from September 18th. I think that's when the last meeting was, right? Oh, I'm sorry. Is it September 18th? And then we should have from the 6th of November as well, right?
I think that's the only one is November 6th.
Yeah, I think it's November 6th. The agenda's got it incorrectly labeled. So approval of minutes from November 6, 2024, regular meeting. Any motions?
I'd move approval.
I second.
Perfect. So we have a motion to approve by Vice Chair Anderson and a second from Commissioner Hamadi.
We have a motion made by Vice Chair Anderson, seconded by Hamadi, to approve the minutes of the November 6, 2024, regular meeting. Commissioner Bowie?
Hi.
Commissioner Hamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
And Chair Wolpert?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Fantastic. We're going to move on to agenda item number eight. And that is our public hearings. Clerk, can you please read the information into the record one more time?
Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal. With exception of the applicant or designee, all attendees may only speak once. The Planning Commission may use its discretion to allow speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions.
Fabulous. We'll start with item number 8.1, case number 2024-0147, a conditional use permit and development review. And I'd like to turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chairs and Commissioners. My name is Sandy Kim. I'm Associate Planner, and I'm here to present the planning case number 2024-0147. The requested entitlement involves a conditional use permit. The project is located at 14191 Beach Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a new vehicle body parts, sales, installation and services business per Westminster Municipal Code 17.220.010. Vehicle parts installations include vehicle body wraps, aftermarket lightings, stickers, detail cleaning, window tinting and speakers. The project site is located on the southwest corner of Beach Boulevard and 14th Street. The subject parcel is about 14,600 square feet in size and is developed with a 6,400 square foot building and 20 parking spaces. The surrounding land use consists of commercial uses in the mixed-use 40 zoning district to the north, east, south and west. Additionally, high residential multifamily residential uses are located on the west in the R4 zoning district. Lots with yellow stripes are designated with the housing overlay, which is a special zoning district over the base zoning district. These lots are identified in the city's housing element site inventory as a potential slots to accommodate the city's unmet regional housing needs allocation. The housing overlay does not apply to this project. This is the view of the project site from Beach Boulevard, and the existing commercial center spans over three parcels totaling about 14,600 square feet. The existing commercial lots were developed in 1953 with 6,400 square foot building and 20 parking spaces. Various commercial businesses have occupied the commercial center since the building was constructed. This is an existing street view from the corner of Beach and 14th Street. There are two existing vehicle driveways, one along Beach Boulevard and another one along 14th Street. The applicant proposes to occupy the vacant tenant space, and the proposed business hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00 and close every Sundays. Here you could see the existing image of the site from the corner of 14th and alleyway. There is an existing rolling door in the rear alleyway where the applicant proposes to use the existing rolling doors to gain access to interior of the subject unit. A maximum of two cars can fit inside the unit for installation work. Here are some photos of the existing condition that applicant provided for the project. Only minor interior modification is proposed to create a new office and storage room; otherwise all existing conditions will remain. This is an existing site plan of this commercial center showing existing conditions. Again, existing driveways along 14th and Beach, parking is around the subject building. The project floor plan with existing conditions are shown on this floor plan except for new storage room and office as shown on the bottom. Land use assessment. It is staff's assessment that proposed business is a permitted land use conditionally with approval of a conditional use permit. The proposed business activities are proposed to be conducted inside the building, and the proposed project is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning code. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve planning case number 2024-0147 and resolution number 24-13 with recommended conditions of approval. Please note that the resolution number has been changed from 20-012 to 013. So previously, it was listed as resolution number 12, but now it's resolution number 13. That's the only difference. This concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions you may have. Additionally, my applicant for this project is here in attendance, and he can provide more detailed information on his own business. Thank you.
Thank you so much, staff. Any questions for staff from the commission?
I have a question. Sandy, could you show us the front elevation again of the building? Yeah, yes, that one. So right now, I guess there are three tenant spaces in the building. There's the Happy EZ and then the ATD and then the space that the applicant wants to go in.
I believe that at some point, this ATD was in conjunction with the vacant tenant. And so they have this unpermitted signs, and so it's really two tenants.
Okay. So the ATD and the one that says Jaclyn, those are the two spaces that the applicant will be occupying?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to be clear, the building is 6,400, exactly in half is 3,200. So the applicant is taking 3,200 square feet.
Thank you.
I would like to see the back of the building, how the access into the garage inside.
It's the, there's a rolling door. It's shown on the slide.
Okay. And is that the street, the street, existing street, is it wide enough for car rolling to and back out without any disruption of incoming traffic? In case there is some?
The alley is a public right-of-way. And it is designed to have accessibility into each parcel in case if they have garages or rolling doors such as this commercial building. So yes, they are allowed to have access to the rear.
Yes. And another question is, in the back of the building, is that residence area or?
Correct. And I have indicated that the, on the west side, which is on the opposite side of the alley, is high-density residential uses in R4 district.
Okay. Have you ever had the traffic starting for that alley? If it is obstructing with the traffic go into the premise?
This alleyway has been established for very long time, and I'm assuming at the time when the city subdivided parcels and created public right-of-way, they vetted those concerns and had to meet the city's engineering. I don't have a city public engineer in attendance to answer specific questions, but it is an established alleyway that is standard to the city's engineering standards.
Shall we have some sign along the alley to make sure that if in case any kids playing in that area, it will hast to slow down the traffic?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Are there any way we should have asking, put in a condition, use permit for a sign along this alley to prevent the street, the car running along in case some kid playing in that area?
Commissioner Bowie, given that this is a public right-of-way, I think it would be appropriate for us to discuss that with the Public Works Director to see if he thinks such a sign would be appropriate. And I would be happy to have that conversation with him.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have one. Could you pull up the internal floor plan of the proposed site? That one there, that's perfect. So where on this existing plan is that roll-up door? Is it just that small blue section in the middle?
Hold on. I'm trying to get pointer going. Laser pointer, okay.
Where it says existing alley access?
So there is a rolling door right here, and it will go right into the work area.
And that's a one-car-sized door?
Yes.
Okay. So the idea is you can pull in two vehicles and then back them out, put them back in the parking lot when they're done?
Correct.
So maximum is work on two cars at one time?
Correct.
Okay. And is that in the conditional use permit anywhere? Are we restricting them, like somebody going to try to cram four cars inside and work on them? Are they going to start working on them in the parking lot? Do we have anything in the permit that prevents them from performing said services in the parking lot itself?
No, we don't have anything that is part of the conditions of approval, limiting the exact number. However, I would imagine if you have more than two vehicles, there will be no space for them to walk around. They need space to do service installations.
Any other questions?
Yeah, but Sandy, just for clarification, but there are restrictions that nothing can be done outside the building, correct?
Correct.
Must be done inside the building.
Correct.
My question was then just to clarify, so this is, is there a limitation on two vehicles working in?
The interior work area is quite small, and with the specific sizes, perhaps the designer is also here in attendance, and perhaps you could specify those questions?
I have a question.
Because then I have a, on the statement and justification that was included in our packet, there was a, it said maintain a closed-door policy for all business activities. Does that mean, and this will be a question then for the applicant, which is when they're doing the work, will this door be closed? Is that what you mean by closed door?
Yes, yes.
To minimize noise to the surrounding area?
Correct. Just to make another note, I'm going to go back to the slide which shows the existing alley. So there is an existing rolling door to the subject tenant space. The next store, which is a furniture store, they also have a rolling door. And further down, continuing along Beach Boulevard, all lot of those parcels have a rear access rolling doors.
That's normal.
So, yes. So it's not just this particular unit, it's throughout the parcels, so Long Beach Boulevard.
I guess the concern would be more noise to the neighboring parcels since it's residential use, even if it's high-density, it's still residential use.
I just have a little notation here. If the space fits three cars, why not? It's up to the business owner how many cars could fit inside. That's his business. He has to run the business and make money to pay his rent. So we're not going to squeeze him just to say, oh, we can only have two inside. If it fits three cars, why not? Let him have it.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you very much, staff. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing and have the applicant come up for 12 minutes.
Yes. So we do have two members of the applicant team, Scott Key or Kai, he's the owner, and Cecilia Villarosa is the architect.
Hi. Oh, hi.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners.
Oh, I don't know what I'm saying. Oh, so I'm the owner of OC10 Detail.
It's a tenant improvement and basically, it's a tenant improvement that we're trying to get approval for Planning Commission. And thank you, Commissioner Hamadi, for bringing that up. Yeah, we need, you know, if we can fit three cars, as a matter of fact, it can be three cars inside. Thank you for considering that. What we need is just to get an approval so we can proceed with the building permit application.
Any other, any other statements or anything you want to tell us? You don't have to. I'm just asking. Okay. I'd like to use the rest of your time, though, if any of the commissioners have any questions directly for you. Do you mind staying up?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Any questions for the applicant?
I don't.
Go right ahead.
So mainly going to be doing alarm system, tint windows, what else?
We're going to do ceramic, like a lot of.
Wrapping?
Yeah. Vinyl wrapping, PPF stuff and, you know, like auto card stuff.
What about auto detail?
Detailing? Yes.
Okay. So that's included, okay?
Yeah.
What about touch-up paint, anything? Any touch-up paint? Like paint touch-up, any scratches or anything like that?
We're not like equipped to do anything extreme on that end.
Okay.
Yeah.
So change of parts, like headlights, trunk doors, things like that?
Correct.
Okay. So basically just basic, basic work?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question.
I've got a question for you, sir. So you indicated you'll be. So you indicated you'll be doing detailing, which includes washing a vehicle? And where will you wash the vehicles?
We're going to be washing the vehicle right where the roll-up gate is.
Inside the building?
Inside the building.
Okay. And so you'll be, the drain, the wastewater will be going down to the sewer?
Correct.
Okay, not in the alley?
Not in the alley.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I do.
In the process of detailing the car, do you use any kind of chemical that may emit to the air or going down to the drain? And how will you prevent those thing into the public?
We just use regular car wash soap. There's nothing extreme in terms of like chemicals that we do specifically. So it's, everything's done at that ramp. So it's just car wash soap, really. In terms of prevention, we don't use any excessive chemicals, so I don't think there's going to be any, any craziness happening, so.
Thank you.
Did you have another question?
No.
Any questions?
Sorry, my mic doesn't work. Are you guys currently in operation?
No, not at the moment, no. We, we work on Friends and Families just to kind of like keep the practice up, but in terms of like the public, no.
Okay, so you're occupying the space currently?
We are occupying it. Yep.
Any other questions?
Good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We need it.
Do you currently own or operate any other shops like this under a different name?
No.
Or any other locations? This is the sole location?
This is the sole location as of today, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Clerk, do we have any other speakers tonight?
We do not.
If that's the case, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, concerns, things you want to bring up? Now's the time to speak about item 8.1.
No, I don't, no concerns. I think we have, we have, the applicant is willing to invest in our community, bring a business in.
That's right.
I think staff has worked to come up with conditions that will ensure compatibility between the two uses. And I think the applicant is, I'm sure the staff has explained to the applicant that if conditions are not met, that this item could come back to the Planning Commission for review. So I'm sure the applicant will abide by all the conditions imposed and be a good neighbor for the residential just across the alley then.
Especially with the hours of operation in consideration and the residential behind it. It'd be nice to have some of that type of business back in Westminster, would be my opinion, because I know there's a couple shops in Huntington Beach. We don't have anything like that that I know of. I don't think there's any competition for you in town as far as I can, I can tell, as far as tint shops and detailing and customization of auto vehicles.
It's a good business. I wish him luck with it, but I'll give him one advice, one advice.
I don't know if this is advice time, Alan.
Loud music at night time is going to have the neighbors come to you. So keep that music down. That's it. You win. You win the headache.
Forty-eight wall subwoofers. All right. I'll move approval on this.
Can I have a question to the staff? When was this applicant apply for CUP? And how long does it take them waiting to get into the hearing? Would you please leave information?
So this project is 2024-0147. So this came in sometime in 2024. I don't, I'm sorry. I don't have the specific date when this application came in, but it was definitely within this year. And originally, the project was deemed incomplete, and I worked closely with the applicant and the designer. And once we had complete plan, this project was scheduled for hearing.
Yes. And do we have many other CUP in waiting in online for, to enhance the business in our city?
Let's answer that a little bit later. I'll let you ask that question after we close this item.
Okay. Thank you.
So I believe we had a motion by Commissioner.
I have a motion to approve it.
Hamadi, to approve the resolution?
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Commissioner Hamadi, seconded by Commissioner Bowie, to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, recommending the Planning Commission approve case number 2024-0147, a conditional use permit to establish and operate a new vehicle body parts, sales, installation and services business on property located at 14191 Beach Boulevard, Westminster, California, 92683, APN 096-344-0708 and 9." I'll call it a, go ahead and call role. Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
And Chair Wolbert?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right.
Chair Wolbert, I'd like to point out that the Commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after the decision date identified in the notice of decision. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the Commission's action to the City Council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 15-day appeal period.
Thank you. We will move on to item number nine, any regular business. I think there's probably none. Item number 10, any reports? None as well? Fantastic. Item 11, any matters from staff? None tonight? All right. Item number 12, matters from the Planning Commission, including AV1, 2, 3, 4 reports when required. Tony, I would love for you to ask your question.
Yes, I would like to ask the, how many CUP the city have received? And how long does it take for a conditional use permit to go into the hearing like this one?
Commissioner Bowie, we have a list of applications that are filed and that are currently under review. I can't tell you off the top of my head how many are on there, but I can tell you that tomorrow I'd be happy to email a list of those applications to all of the Commissioners. We are also working to find ways to streamline the review process so that we can reduce the time that it takes to go from hearing. We recently just introduced a new procedure to separate out the process to deem an application complete from the conformity review to reduce the timeframe. So we are actively trying to reduce the time to take projects to the hearing process. But tomorrow, I'd be happy to send out to you the, the list of the projects that we're actively reviewing.
Thank you. I have my email in the, in the list and send it to me instead of to the email of the Westminster because I rarely check in the email of the city of Westminster.
I will get your preferred email address before I leave the meeting tonight.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or statements from any of the Planning Commission? All right. Everybody's got smiles on, so we must be on item number 13, which is adjournment. The next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, December 18th at 6:30 right here, and that will be the last one of the year. Thank you, everyone. Have a fantastic evening.